Also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to 1 M R S A Section 403-A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board's meeting of July 19, 2023. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and look at all of the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the Chair that if you are unable to hear something. Please note that if any Planning Board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the Board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking shall be asked to state your name and address, and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the Chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the Chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then by those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the Board through the Chair. Any questions must go to and through the Chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The Chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or Board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the Chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. In addition, the Chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with a previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the Chair will ask if there are any new comments. Then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the Chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the Board at the Chair's discretion may ask the applicant or member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public hearing. Planning Board decisions are based solely on whether the applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinance, and any other relevant regulations. After the Board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of facts. Since those findings may substantially affect any appeal rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the Board asks that those attending the meeting do not leave until the Board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the Planning Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the Board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the Board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinance and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. All right, so we'll get started here. Just want to just want to announce for the record that Crystal Tenny, one of our Board members, is attending via Zoom. She was unable to attend tonight in person. All right, so moving on to the first item on the agenda, new business file, R-12-20, 1274, and 1280 Main Street, Melsom River Commons. Jamie, could you orient us on this?
Yes, good evening, everybody. The applicant is requesting preliminary major subdivision and major site plan approval to develop a portion of MAPS R-12, lots 20 and 21, which is the rear of the Springville Nursery's properties in center Sanford, south Sanford, into a 44-unit congregate care facility and the associated site work.
My name is Adrian Fine. I am a civil engineer at Terradyne Consultants, representing the project tonight. Sanford Housing Authority is also here for any questions that arise. So this is the Melsom River Commons project site. It's located adjacent to another Sanford Housing Authority property, the Maples, which is accessed from Mayflower Drive off of Main Street. And you can see in this aerial photo that the greenhouses for that Springvale Nursery are located partially on the the property that's going to be developed, and then the rear portion of the property is currently forested. The city currently owns this property, and Sanford Housing Authority has a purchase and sale for this portion of the land, and it will be combined with the Maples property and accessed from that property through their driveway. The the project is very similar to that site. That, the Maples, is a 26-unit, affordable, age-restricted housing development, so it's very similar, one-bedroom units classified as congregate care. This project is also going to be one-bedroom units, congregate care facility, affordable, age-restricted, and they're going to be sharing some of the same services and staff at the site. So it just makes sense for this to be located right next door and add 44 more additional affordable housing units to Sanford. So the surrounding properties in front of the site here, we have land that's also owned by the city today, and that's land that's proposed right now for a future fire department development, for a new fire station. And the land to the west over here is the Sanford Manor apartment complex. Behind, there's some forested area and sports fields affiliated with the schools, and then, like I said, it's the Maples property, Sanford Housing Authority, right next door. So this is our proposed development plan. As I said, it would be accessed from the Mayflower Drive through the Maples to this property. We have the three-story building that will contain the 44 units and a 52 parking space parking lot. Forty-eight of those spaces are for Melsom River Commons. Four of those spaces are for the Maples, because we are removing a few of their spaces to install the driveway, so four of these will be designated specifically to that site. Seventeen of the spaces are ADA, which is more than typically required, but this is a main state housing authority project. It will be funded through their low-income tax credit program, and they have certain requirements for additional ADA spaces, for additional ADA units. So that's part of their requirements, is why the parking lot is maybe a little bit bigger than would typically be needed, but accommodating all of those accessible units. The project will be served with new water and sewer utilities. The water utilities are going to come from Mayflower Drive, and there will be a hydrant on the site located in front of the building. The building will be fully sprinkled with fire service and new domestic water. The sewer service is planned to come out of the back of the building and actually cross onto the Sanford Manor property and access Sanford Sewerage District sewer main that's on that property. And that was a recommendation of the sewer district to connect in that location, because that's where we have gravity to sewer. So we have discussed that with Sanford Manor owners, and they have agreed to give us an easement. They've written a letter that was in the packet that said that they would allow for an easement, and we're working on the draft language of that easement to be provided before the final approval of the project. We'll also have underground electric and communication lines coming from the Mayflower Drive side. There's some utilities we could extend from the Maples to the site. And the plan for heating and cooling is to have heat pump-style condenser units on the site, so there's no gas utilities being proposed at this time. The project has a landscape plan and some other site amenities designed by the landscape architect, Pat Carroll. We have an area with raised garden beds for use by the residents. We have two pickleball courts and some outdoor seating areas here. We have a dumpster located here that can be accessed through this striped-out area in the parking lot for pickup. The parking lot was designed with a lot of back-and-forth with the fire department. We were, we provided turning templates, which were also in the plan set that you received, showing that their largest ladder truck can come down Mayflower, turn into the site, and go through the Maples driveway and into our driveway, and can turn around on the site in this turning loop, and also turn around on the site at the end of our our parking lot. So we have sufficient, you know, emergency access to the site and turning ability on the site. Those drive aisles are wider than typical. We're proposing some sloped mountable curb, and the, that was one of the kind of conditions put on some of the locations in the site by the fire marshal, and that also we need to make sure our signage is, you know, set back from those curb lines. So there's no restrictions, you know, if they were to get close to it, but we did provide plenty of room, so that that's not expected. As far as stormwater management, we're proposing to manage stormwater on the site with infiltration measures. This project requires a stormwater permit from Main D E P., which we have submitted. We're expecting to have that permit issued in August, in early August. And it's also meeting all of the Sanford requirements for this Melsom River watershed. And so the infiltration will be through a permeable pavement system, as well as a gutter infiltration well system behind the site here. We've studied the site extensively with test pits and an infiltration test, and found that the site is very well-suited for infiltration stormwater, which is great. The building itself is, like I said, three stories. It has some community area on the ground floor in the front here. I have a few renderings from the architect that I was going to show, just showing what it would look like driving into the site. Varied roofline, multicolor building, and there's going to be kind of a large covered porch area right off the front, where those community spaces will have access to that outdoor space as well. There were a couple of things that were kind of outstanding items listed in the memo. One was that draft easement for the sewer, which I already mentioned we are working on and will be providing that. Another one was to add curb stops for specifically these ADA spaces where there's flush curb. I spoke with the city engineer, and we're planning to add actually bollard signs. So each of those parking spaces needs a sign indicating that it's an ADA space. So instead of it being a standard signpost behind the parking, or behind the sidewalk, we'll have that right in front along the curb line to prevent any vehicles from driving onto the sidewalk. And then another one was about the project sign, which is going to be located in the center here, and we will be providing a design for that before the final approval. We are also requesting three waivers. Two of them are more like a procedural waiver. They were in our letter. If you want justification on the two procedural ones, let me know. That was from the Site Inventory and Analysis step and from a traffic impact analysis. This project is congregate care facility. It's expected that a fraction of the residents are going to have vehicles, and only two staff members will be coming to the site on a daily basis, and it'll be the same people who are going to the Maples already. So it's a pretty low traffic impact. And then the third waiver is a waiver from the subdivision section that requires a subdivision of 15 lots or more to have two access points. And this project is technically a subdivision of 44 units, but it's one building on a two-acre site that's a congregate care facility, which in the past have been allowed to have a single access point. So we're requesting that waiver. We've also worked, you know, extensively with the fire department and provided those turning templates, showing that they can access the site both through the driveway from Mayflower and turning around on the site in the new parking lot as well. And there were some emails in in the review comments from the fire marshal stating that approval of those turning templates on June 2nd. And, you know, we did, because it was a requirement, we did look at some options for providing that second access, and because that land out front, just go to that first map again, this land out front is going to be developed as the fire department, the new fire station. We met with the fire station design team, their engineers, and they are planning to develop basically this entire site, and the land elevation is much higher up here by Main Street than it is on our property. So they're actually expecting to have like a 15-foot-high retaining wall at the back of their site, adjacent to our site. So between that grade difference and the fact that they need the whole parking lot for, or the whole parcel for their parking lot for fire use, they were not, they were hoping that we wouldn't need to, you know, use any of their land for a second access point, and it would be pretty difficult to construct that steep driveway. So those are our justification for requesting that waiver. And with that, we'll take any questions from the Board.
Before we take questions, we'll open up the public hearing, and then we'll circle back.
Sure.
I'll now declare the public hearing open. If there's anybody who would like to speak in favor of this project?
Hi, my name is Dennis Foskowski, and I live along with my wife and friend and the residents of, I think there's about 26 apartments at the Maple. Their concern along with me is that I just would like to really know tonight, if possible, is there a road that's going to go right by our apartment complex? Right now, it's a driveway, as everybody knows. Mayflower Drive comes off 109. Then you take the left to go down. It's a driveway. It's not a road. It's a driveway to our complex, where that's where we park our vehicles. We have a concern if heavy vehicles to build that facility, which the residents have no problem with a brand-new senior 44-apartment building going up. That's not our point. Well, our point is that we're concerned about the safety of the residents. We have residents there, the early 90s, that still drive. We have residents who are in their 80s, and they still drive. We also have residents who are in the 70s, and we all drive. So almost every person there at the Maples has a vehicle, and we all drive. And if that road, that driveway, isn't widened, and if it doesn't go by the front door, we, I think everything might be okay. I'm concerned about the safety of the residents, especially when the heavy equipment come in to build that facility. How are they coming in? Is there going to be a second road? Which we've heard you're supposed to have a second road, because if there's an accident on the Mayflower Drive or going by our apartment complex, and all of a sudden the ambulance are there, the fire department's there, everybody's there, and if something happens? Then if people want to get out because they have to get out of the area for some reason for emergency, are you just going to have one, one road that's going to lead to that complex? I think really that's unacceptable. But the only thing, again, I think it's great. I wish Sanford, the city of Sanford would put up more buildings, apartment buildings, for the younger generation that's coming to the city. If you want the city to build, and you want people to come here, you've got to build more buildings. It's great that Sanford Housing is doing this, but you've got to do more than just Sanford Housing, you know? They're doing a fine job. We have no complaint. It's just that we're looking out for our safety, and basically that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll let you respond once we get through the rest of the public hearing. So is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anybody who would like to speak neither for nor against, but would like to have a, make any comments or ask a question? All right, I will declare the public hearing closed. Would you like to respond to the comment from the gentleman?
Sure. As far as the construction vehicle access, we have a contractor who's been on board with some of the planning of this project, so they're well-aware of the nature of the site, the access, and the residents who live there, and they'll have to be, you know, cautious and OSHA-compliant through all of their procedures. So, you know, we don't really see that as a concern, and we can, you know, maybe provide some signage for them to to go slow as a reminder. But they are already on board and aware of the nature of the project and the nature of the site. And then as far as the one-access portion of his comments, you know, this is kind of an extension of the Maples, and it's a very similar sort of project, and yes, it's more units, but, you know, Sanford Housing doesn't expect there to be a lot of the residents who drive every single day, and there are going to be a lot of programs in place through the staff that already come to this area to bring things for these people to the property, so they won't all be driving to, you know, go for social, socialization or things like that. So we felt that the one-drive was sufficient from a traffic perspective. And then for emergency access as well, you know, we've, like I said, been speaking with the fire department and given them all the dimensions of the existing and proposed drive with turning templates. And then that same discussion of if we were to add another driveway through the front of the site to Main Street, that's going to be really steep, really costly. This is a main state housing project, and it would be really financially difficult to add a bunch of impervious area, difficult, steep construction with retaining walls. We would have to go back to D E P. and amend our permitting. It would probably delay or cause this project to be much less feasible, or possibly not feasible. So, you know, we've studied this and looked at it from all angles of the traffic and the access, and we've been in constant conversation with the city and the fire reviewers, so we are still requesting that waiver to have the one-access drive. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to, I have a, something I want to bring up on the same, on the same issue. So I read the same thing that this gentleman talked about with the with the access. So it was concerning to me, and it was less about the access for the general driving in and out. This is a narrow driveway or a narrow road, private road going down into this facility, and if there was something else that happened on that road, now you have 70-plus units that are not going to be able to be accessed with emergency services. So maybe not a, maybe not a regular access point, maybe some other type of emergency-only access, maybe, I understand the the other site on the fire department site, that could be difficult, but you you have maintained easement going into the Manor. Maybe there's a potential to put a, a, an access road in there that's gated with a knox box on it, something that can still allow the access for emergency vehicles. So yes, I understand that there'll be less driving in and out of there, just because of the type of residents that you'll have there, but those residents are also likely more like, more likely to need those emergency services, and if we block the road for, in some reason, that could be very detrimental. So I think that's something that's worth discussing more. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that from the Board?
I absolutely agree with Tom, because I have the same concerns, and I was actually going to echo exactly what he has already said.
Thanks, Crystal. Lenny?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think I agree with that comment. I think there needs to be another, another way in and out of the property, just for safety reasons. But I was going to ask, I don't remember off the top of my head looking at this, is there a way that that can be accessed through the high school property, through the high school access road? Just wondering how close that is.
No. Originally, the main entrance to the high school was going to be through Mayflower Drive. There's a wetland, there's a peat bog, there's all kinds of stuff on that backside of the property going towards the high school that would prohibit.
So it's not physically possible to put one in there? Okay.
Can I just point out on my plan where you were talking about that easement, just so you're aware? So can you see my cursor here?
Nope.
Oh, where's the, oh. Okay, so the the easement is going to be here. And so that's to the very back of the building. I just wanted you to be aware of that if we continue to discuss it, that, you know, that's not connected to the parking lot, and there isn't really room on the site to connect that to another drivable surface. So I understand what you're saying about like a emergency-only drive with a fence, but it would essentially be like a dead end at the back of a building and not necessarily a place where vehicles who are parked here or here could like use to exit. And you might be able to see it here, but they have, right here, this is our parking lot. They have parking here, and they have a dumpster and a shed, and a lot of like utilities right here. So, you know, we looked at this whole property line, and it would be a lot of reconfiguration of their site to access adjacent to where our parking is. They've approved, you know, us to access here, where it's around their parking, there's some trees here, and then it goes to pavement here, but that, again, goes to the back of our building. So I just wanted to point that out before we got too far down that, that it's maybe not the most feasible. Also, we were told by the fire marshal that we shouldn't use that as an option, so we didn't explore it further, because he felt that they didn't want to have to drive through that site for a fire.
Jamie, you want to add something?
I can, I can answer a few of those questions. The concern with the fire marshal when he made it was thinking it was going to be a primary second access, meaning an access that's used regularly, and then we didn't necessarily want to put all the traffic through Manor's parking lot, because that parking lot wasn't designed for all the extra traffic. We're now sacrificing for an emergency-only access point to help alleviate maybe you guys' fear of something happening blocking the Mayflower Drive road or their actual driveway off of Mayflower, given that emergency-only access coming from the Manor Circle. And not that it has anything to do with this project. In theory, it could potentially also give secondary access to Manor Circle from this side if something was to happen at Manor's entrance. So it could potentially help both ways. I am partially now Patrick as well, so I can safely say that I would be comfortable with an emergency access only through the Manor parking lot. On another note, currently, the sewer easement is shown coming out of the rear of the building, where it would be hard to get access to for an access road, but it's my understanding that that's not written up yet. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So potentially, could that be moved? And Ben, can you pull up my screen? So here's the updated site plan they provided that shows the sewer easement coming out of the rear. of the rear. And while I'll agree it would potentially affect a couple parking spots in their parking lot, could you potentially run the sewer easement out and come across this way where you could connect it from the parking lot? And, and I'm not suggesting it has to happen yet, because that's the planning board's decision. I'm just trying to help give some solutions should they not approve the waiver. So I was looking at this earlier, and potentially, you could ask for two easements, leave the sewer line where it is, or potentially, you could come out maybe the front of the building, come across here, connect it with here, and then run that sewer line up here and across. It would be a little bit longer, but it's, it's a potential. You guys have worked extremely hard to get to this point. I don't, I don't want a roadblock, so I've been, I've been working all afternoon trying to find a potential solution should the planning board have concerns. You're the designer, I don't know if any of that will work, but those are kind of things I've thought about this afternoon.
Yeah, no, I definitely appreciate that, and I think that, you know, elevation-wise, it's much closer, so I'm not concerned with like a 15-foot drop over there. What I am concerned with is that that's existing parking for Sanford Manor, and I don't know if they would allow us to connect and move their parking. It would mean rebuilding portions of their parking that we weren't originally factoring into the finances of this project, plus redesigning parts of our site and building more pavement. And, you know, that's going to change a lot of things on our site and be more costly. It's just going to make the cost of the project go up, and I'll just, you know, I hate to be like, the finances are the only thing, but with main-street housing projects, they are really important, because you're, it's a competitive process to try and get funding from the state for these projects. And if you're not scoring appropriately in their process, or your finances are coming in too high, then you have to start removing things from the site. So, you know, if we have to build a road, we may have to not build pickleball courts or start to get rid of amenities within the building or certain fixtures and features in the building in order to accommodate site costs. I know that doesn't always make or break a project, or safety is very important, but it's worth mentioning.
Maybe else on the board have any comments on this, questions?
Would this emergency access have to be plowed? And when the Maples was built, was that required to have a second ax, ax, or exit and access, whatever?
Maples did receive a waiver for that second access requirement.
Okay.
This will be three times the number of residents utilizing this roadway compared to when the Maples was. You know, when you add the residents for the Maples and the new residents of the new building, we'll now be having three times the residents that are serviced by this road.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? It's Mary Hastings.
Who's that?
From, from Growth Council.
Sure, I mean, the public hearing's over, but please.
Yeah, I don't need it to be on the hearing. I was just wondering, for the project, do we know, like on the, on the original building that you're talking about, like how many vehicles that actually is, so you can talk in real numbers? Like, I don't know how many apartments there are and how many vehicles are there, but I mean, if we're talking a minute amount of vehicles, you know, as compared to the amount of apartments, that may give you a better idea of how many vehicles total in the two buildings there, there is. That's all I, that's all I have to say.
So I'll just throw this out there. My concern is less about the traffic, the normal in and out of traffic. My concern is we're putting 44 more units on a small road, and we are potentially going to strand them, right? There's not going to be access to get to them. So we're going to have 70-plus, well, not 70, so it would be really just this side, could potentially be totally blocked out from being able to get access by emergency services. That's my concern. It's less about the, the traffic turns, because I recognize that those are going to be really, really small compared to other types of developments. So I'll just throw that out there.
Can we provide some more context? Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Small, the executive director of Sanford Housing. So my thought in hearing this, because I do obviously care about the people that we serve, and the safety is huge, right? And thinking about the second access, and we went over it and over it to try to figure out how we could potentially put a second emergency access in, and nothing seemed to be working out. So if we could provide the number of calls for service that we get at Maples, and then multiply that by a number to kind of ease your mind, because that's oftentimes what I'll do, is I'll call the police department and get calls for service at all our, sorry, all our buildings, to see, you know, what, because that sometimes presents to you what if people are falling a lot, or if there's, what issues are happening within the building. And Maples doesn't really get a lot of service calls. So would that ease your mind about the traffic being bottlenecked, or if there was an emergency that? Or no?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think it, it's not going to ease my mind, because it's like, it's one, right? It happens once, and we had the opportunity to take care of this now, that's the time, right? It's not after we have an issue, have too many, too many calls. That's just my opinion, I'm not the only member of this board.
We do maintain the road as well, so we do, we contract the plowing, it's, it's well-plowed.
But my concern is, if there's an accident, something happens and blocks that road, emergency services cannot get down there. If that road gets blocked, that's it. It's an island, so that's, that's where I am. I mean, I don't, I definitely don't want to speak for the rest of the board up here, but that's, that's where I'm getting really hung up on this, and there's just this waiver. Other than that, I'm feeling pretty good about the rest of this project.
And Tom, I absolutely agree with you. I think about residents possibly being stranded, you know, and I thought that was actually a great word to use, because essentially, that's what they are, they're on their own little islands. It's not necessarily about the traffic or the maintenance of the road, it's the possibility of, you know, there being an emergency. It literally only takes one time, and where do they go for safety? I think that Jamie's suggestion to tie into the Manor across the way, if that's a possibility, I understand cost factors, but at the same time, when we are literally discussing safety of, of our residents, and I, I think it's definitely worth looking more into.
I just ask a quick, quick, can I ask the city engineer to weigh in on this? I don't know if he really wants to, but.
What do you get paid for?
Yeah, so.
Pick your brain on this a little.
It really is exactly what you guys said, as far as emergency access issue, as far as, you know, the traffic doesn't, the traffic isn't a concern, the traffic generation or anything like that. As far as the, the width of the roadway, I can't remember exactly what it is. Adrian, do you know?
Of the driveway coming from Mayflower through the Maples?
That's right, yeah.
It's 26 to 28 feet wide.
Okay, all right, so that would be, that, you know, that supports typical two-way traffic, as far as, you know, so, trying to think of what to compare to. If it were a street, you know, that, that's, that's typical. Private ways are only 16 feet, but that specifically says it serves three units, you know, so anything above that, it needs to be built to local street standards. So when you talk about, and the reason I bring that up is when you talk about the unit count, we're obviously, you know, with 70 units, we're well, well above that. So from an engineering standpoint, 24 feet is 24, 26, that's typical width for two-way traffic, but it can easily get choked off, like you said, in an emergency situation, so.
But you're talking about the access road from Mayflower in, right? How wide is Mayflower?
Mayflower Drive? I, I don't know the width of that, but, I mean, it looks like it's about the same, 24 to 26 feet wide, if I'm just looking at the aerial, but I don't have a measurement on that. I think it's 45 feet.
The best measurement I can get on our GIS is, it's about 23 feet. Mayflower Drive itself, you're talking. Yep.
Not the right way.
Yeah, I don't know if my answer helped at all, I don't know if that's what you were looking for. It's really, as far as engineering and traffic goes, the one-access isn't so much of a concern, but from a, yeah, emergency response standpoint, which isn't exactly my, my forte, is it, that's where it comes in, that's where it comes into play, the concerns.
So the standard, there's a standard for this, right? That's what we're being asked to waive. What is the standard for? Is the standard for traffic turns, or is this standard to ensure public safety? Do we have that clarity in the?
I think it's, it's based on the units, right?
The actual standard doesn't specify.
The why.
What it was for. It just says more than 15 units, you need the second point of access. It's safe to assume it's a combination of the both. If this was a residential housing development that is typical, single-family houses side by side, you have more traffic, you have more cars, you, you might need more entrances. In the case of a subdivision, internal subdivision, as I call it, a building, it's really not the traffic count, especially when we're talking congregate care, because while I'll agree with the tenant, there are, there are cars there, they don't leave as frequently as you or I might go into work every day and, and stuff. So I, I don't think we're concerned about the, the actual traffic count, the actual people coming and going every day. It's the, it's the one-off if something was to happen either in Mayflower Drive or in the access driveway. And at the same time, another event happened in one of the two buildings, then it is blocked. I think, and I think in this case, it's strictly for an emergency. Hope never happens, but if there's anything I've learned in the last five years, you've got to expect the unexpected.
Do you think Sanford Manor would allow, would be open to having an emergency access gate on their property? Have you had any contact with them, or?
I have not had any contact. I, I don't know about.
We've only spoken to them about the sewer easement. You know, they definitely wanted to know what the easement was and what it was for, and that it was underground and not really going, and we were going to restore it, and it wasn't really going to impact their site, but.
And a one-time cost as well as associated with 25,000, so I'm sure with a emergency access, it'll be a steep price.
Yeah, so in addition to the construction costs, there's also, you know, costs that they would be charging Sanford Housing Authority in order to put in an emergency access, plus building new parking somewhere on their site, that would probably have to get approved in order to have a designated area where an emergency vehicle could drive, because right now, that's all, right here, this is all parking. Oh, you're screwing, my screen's not up, sorry. I keep thinking it's still up there. From like this spot right here, all the way down, I know it's hard to see because of the trees and the shadows, but like this is all parking spaces. So we would have to be, you know, removing some of their spaces, also that's, you know, a turn and a turn for a large fire truck, I'm not sure.
Wouldn't that also require them to amend their site plan? Which could potentially turn to quite the headache?
Yes, but depending on the amount of change, it could be as simple as a staff level. So let's assume they have to, which in theory, we have to do for the sewer line anyways, because sewer lines are shown on site plans. So that's already going to have to happen, but let's assume they lose three spots for the access to be able to turn the fire truck. I believe that project was, has excess parking to give up, I'm not sure they would have to rebuild those three spots somewhere else. I, I believe that project was approved with excess parking originally. And I just want to remind everybody, this is preliminary subdivision tonight, so you guys could recommend, would either accept it or not accept it, and then they could go back to Sanford Manor, and if Sanford Manor says absolutely not, they could apply for the final without the second one and ask for the waiver again, with the, with the knowledge that Sanford Manor says, no, we're not interested. I am on the design team for the potential new fire station. I asked tough questions to our, our designers, and there's a very, very, very tiny chance that we can make this work to give them access into our site. It's, it's actually closer to a 20-foot grade change, and to provide the proper slope for a fire truck to be able to use it, either the fire department's going to lose half their lot, or they're going to lose half their lot, and neither one of them have the lot to lose. So the, the access into the, the fire station partial is, is very unlikely at this time. I, I originally was hopeful that it wouldn't be that unlikely, because what better way to give emergency access than out the back of the fire station? But that, it does not seem feasible at this point. And, and if Sanford Manor says, no, we, we don't want to lose the spots, we don't want extra traffic, we don't, we don't, whatever, then they have the opportunity to come back at final and say, here's the email from Sanford Manor President saying, nope, the fire station's a nope, there's a wetland out back, that's a nope, we don't have any other options. And then you guys could decide again if you want to approve the waiver at the, at the final.
I'll support that. Let's go, pending a decision by Sanford Manor.
Jamie, does the city own our 1220? Which is right next to Springvale Nurseries? I thought, didn't that house burn down? I thought Springvale Nurseries bought that.
So yes, we, the city owns two properties side by side. The house that burned down is part of the Springvale Nursery site, yes.
I know there's a big drop-off behind Springvale Nurseries, but is that the same on this next parcel?
It will be by the time we're done with the parcel for Springvale Nurseries. The, the fire station is a rather expansive building with parking requirements on its own, and.
Well, didn't you guys also, aren't you in, buying McKinney's old place?
We have also purchased the Courtney Cleaners building. This is, this is the central station.
I would think you'd be able to work it out so that they can get emergency access.
So behind Courtney Cleaners building is another wetland, so that, that limits that. The, the proposed fire station, as it sits today, which is still in very, very preliminary stages, takes up the entire parcel. It is, I don't know how much detail you want me to get in, so tell me to stop whenever you want. There's, there's a 20-foot retaining wall that's going to go between the two properties. In order to have a structural 20-foot retaining wall, you have to have what's called GeoGrid at least 20 feet into the site, more preferably twice the height of the wall to help support the wall. You can't build any structures on top of that GeoGrid, which basically means the last 40 feet of the parking lot isn't buildable, per se. You can put a driveway over it, but that is a system that inherently fails, so you have to redo that every three decades. The proposed fire station is being built as a 100-year building, so there's very likely we're going to have to fix that retaining wall at least once in that 100 years. So it's, it's a complicated site, it's a complicated, complicated more by the, the fire station is in the very, very beginning stages, and we have to take it to the citizens of Sanford's for, for bond approval. So we're trying to do as much work as we have to to get a preliminary design and budget to then go up to bond to find out if the citizens are ready to support it. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a work in motion, but, but ultimately, I don't think their access is, is going to be able to be working into the fire station lot.
All right, thanks.
Can I ask you a quick question about Sanford Manor? So this would be an emergency access only, so it wouldn't have through traffic, and the turning radius for the fire truck would work going in? I'm just trying to picture Sanford Manor and the turn that we would have to put in.
So that would end up how your consultant, where they, where Sanford Manor might agree to have. So that would end up how your consultant, where Sanford Manor might agree to have the access, how they worked it tying into your lot and into their lot. She is 100% correct. It would require a few, it's not a direct shot, there's a building right there on their side, so.
Right.
It would require some figuring to make sure you could actually get a truck to it. But in the event of emergency, our fire department would much prefer to get an engine to the property.
Yep.
And an ambulance to the property instead of nothing to the property.
And then maybe cars out.
So even if it can't get the Truck 37, our big ladder truck, if it could get an ambulance to help somebody having a heart attack or to get an engine to start pumping water.
And you think the fire department would be okay with that? Because they're very particular about the turning radius.
And I don't want to broadcast too loudly. Again, I now have assumed about three quarters of Patrick's duties. So a lot of these decisions now fall in my lap.
Okay.
I would consult with the chief. I am not a member of the fire department, but again, I would assume that any access is better than no access. But if it goes that route, I will confirm with the fire chief and make sure that he agrees with me.
He's pretty responsive too. We've had lots of conversations with him, so he's great.
So I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult here. This is our opportunity to kind of really influence this process. So please don't take this as us being difficult. We're just trying to do the right thing. So I mean, I think that there's enough of us that have voiced concern with this that I don't think we'd be comfortable passing a waiver tonight on this. I, so let's just, let's table the waiver, not table it officially, but set the waiver down. Are there any other concerns with this plan that the planning board has? Questions?
I took my question. I was going to ask about the access from the fire department to the actual site. So here, answer my question with that one.
Okay. Crystal?
Yes, wasn't there a question about signage that was brought up?
During construction?
I don't think it was construction and I don't have it up in front of me.
Was it for the building sign, the project sign?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, we received those comments and we will provide a design of the sign. It's located in the turning, or the center of this turning access. It's essentially just a very straightforward sign that says Madison River Commons to locate people. When they drive in the driveway, they know where they are. We're going to provide information on that sign prior to final approval.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. So if we don't have anything, any other concerns except for that, that one waiver, do we have findings of fact on this?
I prepared findings of fact, but where this is preliminary, I didn't need them.
Okay.
So they're in the backup, but we'll save them for round two. I do have a suggested motion.
Can I ask one question about the waiver conversation? So given that the Maples is also a congregate care facility, I know it's less units and this is, you know, more because you're adding on, they did receive a waiver for the same thing, to have one access point. If we are unable to get the ability to go through Sanford Manor, like if they won't work with us or if the costs are basically going to mean we can't build the project, I guess, is it even worth us coming back for final and asking for the waiver again or not? And I know it's a hard question because it sounds like you want us to have two access points. But if there's no way to make that work. And one other piece of information too, and this project has a deadline for funding and we are fastly approaching that deadline. So we don't have all the time in the world to make these decisions and still get this project built in this way in this timeframe.
And we're also closing on alone to finalize the purchase and sales, which is a significant amount of money. We have pre-development costs, which is a significant amount of money based on that we thought we were going to be okay. So yeah, as soon as possible, because we wouldn't obviously purchase the, finish the purchase and sale.
I guess I'm in the position of, I'd be willing to entertain the waiver once we know the due diligence has been done.
Yep.
I'd like to know, you know, for sure that the fire department, this site's not going to work or the manor's not going to work or any other creative idea.
Yep.
That we've exhausted all those options, just because this is, this is our one chance to do this. The fact that it was waived before, I, that wasn't me, so.
I just look at this requirement, the requirements for 15 or more. The other property was, only exceeded it by, say, 50%. Now there's going to be 60 or 70 units using this exact same exemption or exception from the waiver, which is now, you know, four, 500% greater than what the standard is. I think that's kind of an even dangerous precedent for future projects too.
Just a quick question, Jamie. This can be on our next agenda, can't it? I mean, this could be a quick turnaround. It doesn't take that long, does it?
So they have to reapply for final? Their goal was to reapply tomorrow to try to get in the next cycle. If, how responsive was the manor your first go around with your easement request?
It took some time, but now I have a relationship with them.
You're going to say, is the door now open?
And I have a cell phone number, so I could call. But they were very particular about, one, the fee that we would have, the one-time fee. And then also that we weren't going, we're going to not disturb and restore the property. So it's worth, you know, I can ask. I can really let them know it's about safety and the concern and that the project really relies on this second access in order to go. Because if we don't get it, obviously, we're not going to build it, so.
So if they were to apply tomorrow, we would get them on the next available site plan and then it would be two weeks for the planning board, which means theoretically, they would be back in front of you in a month if all the stars aligned. That would give them, say, three weeks to work out a deal with the butter and to see if it could work.
Could they put a second roadway in off of Mayflower Drive so that one is, you know, the one-way, one's entrance and the other's exit?
There's wetlands concerns basically on the front and the back of the property.
Oh.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that satisfied the.
Well, if you block one roadway, you can go in, you know, the fire truck can go in the Doona and Enter One.
My concern is also, is really all the way out to Main Street. Right? You've got one access road serving 70-plus units. Not just this one 44 unit, but it's all of them.
I have a quick question.
We're just adding more to it. Go ahead, Crystal.
Is there a way to tie in to the Maples' current parking lot? And I see that there's a little, on the map, it shows like a block of yellow, it said storage, I believe. But maybe if we could sort of move that, I don't know where else, but kind of tie into the Maple parking lot and then create sort of a second road that would tie into 109? Is that possible? I know it's kind of a really far stretch, but.
We already talked about that there's wetland in between the Maples and the Courtney Cleaners building.
And that's a lot of work for, only half the benefit that we're thinking about.
I doubt, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
I doubt that this is possible, but what if Mayflower Drive connected through to the high school?
That is not possible.
That's not possible, okay.
That was our original plan, that.
Oh, okay. Because there's a trail there with a bunch of like mowed lawn.
There is a trail. That was the.
So not even for emergency access, it's non-imperious, it's just.
It would have to be.
You're talking about going to the high school?
Yeah.
There's a 30-foot-deep peat bog that you couldn't drive a matchbox car over without sinking.
And I did have one follow-up question, kind of with the timing of everything, is that if we do get the ability to connect to Sanford Manor and we are going to, you know, put a driveway, like design that, given the timing constraints of our approval process, would it be possible for us to have like that as a condition? That, you know, we've worked out that we can get this easement, access easement, we're going to put a driveway there and the final design will be like approved by staff? If we can't get the full design in in time for the deadlines for the meeting?
But we're not approving anything tonight anyway.
No, I know. I know. I mean, I mean, you know, this could take a little more time to get a final design of that road connection than we have to get approvals of the project to meet the main state housing funding deadline.
What, okay, so that's a lot of liability on you, right? You could be asking us to put a condition in saying that you'll add this later and if we don't, if you don't get it done, you could build and I guess that's.
Well, I mean, we would know that we have the, that's if we know that we have the ability to do it. We wouldn't do that if we didn't have the easement worked out and the location.
I'm just talking about the actual design.
Actual legal, the, all the documentation. Go ahead, Jamie.
I think I would want to see some sort of documentation that the easement is possible. I think I would want to see on the plan at least a rough sketch of where it's going.
Yeah, definitely.
And approval would be conditioned that you don't start work until that final plan is submitted and approved.
Yes.
Anybody else?
The reason for getting that approval is just to get you funded. You need to get that going so you make the deadline.
Right, yeah. It wouldn't be that like we were going to not do it. It would be that just, you know, and we could probably even have that full design by the time we get to the meeting here. It's just, you know, we have to get a plan weeks in advance of that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm personally not opposed to that, that sort of condition. I don't know what else thoughts are on that. If that would be satisfactory, everybody?
Yep.
Okay, so may I understand your timeline?
Hopefully, we don't have to do that, but I'm just asking the question, so.
No, I appreciate that, so, all right.
I think the condition, and I'm willing to make that exception. I think that sounds reasonable.
All right, thanks, Crystal.
Do we have a?
I do have a suggested motion. The planning board accepts the information in the July 18, 2023 summer report and the July 19, 2023 site plan review committee recommendation. Grant the requested waiver for 275-14 and 275-21-G-4 and find the proposed preliminary major subdivision application file R12-20 to develop a portion of map R12, Lost 20 and 21 into a 44-unit congregate care facility with associated site work has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. In the major final subdivision application, provide revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. Applicant to submit signage details such as materials, dimensions, and mountain plan. B, applicant to submit updated plant schedule, table, indoor site plan, L1.0 to accurately depict landscaping plan. C, applicant to submit draft language for the easement with Sanford Manor Apartments as part of the sewer connection plan and/or maybe road access plan. Update site plan to show second access point as required for subdivisions of more than 15 units. Update final plans to show utility location and separation distances. F, show placement and detail for mountable curb on final plan. G, any additional conditions outlined in staff memos or as they arise during discussions. H, show Knox Box location on final plan. Which ones can we strike?
The landscaping plan and the mountain.
Excellent. So I'm going to amend that suggested motion to erase the landscaping plan and to erase the detail on mountable curb.
We also have the separation in the sewer line.
That was.
That was worked out and sent to the.
I don't believe we had time to review that.
The separation from the water district? Yes.
I don't believe we had time to review that, so we're going to leave it. And if you already have the plan done, it's one last thing you've got to do.
All right.
All right.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second?
All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, item number two, new business file, R4-23, Oak Street, Sanford Community Forest. All right, Jamie, would you just orient us and then we'll have bring the applicant up?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of Three Rivers Land Trust, just to bring it up, in case you think there's a conflict.
All right. You don't, you're not getting paid by them or have any financial gain to this or anything?
No, I paid them.
All right, I don't know what's the rest of the board think about this? Any concerns with the conflict?
I have no concerns.
Three Rivers Land Trust.
They are the applicant?
Yes, I do not have an issue with it.
Tom? Just a point of clarification where Crystal is on Zoom. We have to do a roll call vote. Or is there any chance we could redo that vote in a roll call form, please?
Sure.
Sorry for the technicality.
My apologies.
No worries. We'll make this official.
You owe us.
Right?
I do.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so six zero. Now we're official.
Thank you.
Thanks, no, keep us honest. Anyway, so just before we orient, just to make, for talk about this conflict issue. Like I said, I don't, I don't see an issue, only because there's no fiduciary gain here. I do understand what you're saying, Lenny, about that, but.
You wouldn't, you shouldn't have a member of the board actually voting, a member of that organization voting on their own application. That technically is a conflict.
If he was a board member, I'd feel highly against this, whereas he's just a deuce-bang member.
He does have an, well.
I didn't hear what he said.
I personally feel he would be fine as long as he feels he can make an impartial decision.
All right.
So the applicant has requested major site plan and shoreline approval to improve existing access driveway, improve slash create sustainable, sustainable recreational trails and to create a 60 by 80-foot gravel parking area on tax map R423. It's actually a couple of mapping logs, but that's the primary one.
Yes, that's the one in Sanford. The property was created out of 13 different parcels, conglomerated into one property when we purchased it in '21. Okay, well, good evening, everybody. My name is Sheri Dunning. I am the executive director at the Three Rivers Land Trust. We haven't had.
Sorry to interrupt. Could you just state your, you said your name, could you just state your address too, just for the record?
Sorry?
Your address?
Yes, our address is 235 Swettsbridge Road in Alfred. That's the location of our office.
Thank you.
We haven't had the pleasure of coming before the planning board before because we only just recently purchased property in Sanford. We acquired the, what we call the Sanford Community Forest in fall of 2021 and that is the site location for our application. This is a 547-acre property. It does extend somewhat into Lebanon, but only by a little. And all of our proposed work is on the city of Sanford portion. So the goal of this project is to create and improve a community resource that includes trails for hiking, mountain biking, skiing, snowshoeing, and potentially snowmobiling, although we don't know yet if the trails will be groomed in the winter. This will also offer the opportunity for community events led by the land trust. There is a certain amount of space that we can keep maintained. There is a certain amount of space that we can keep maintained in an open condition, so holding events for the land trust at that location is possible. In order to facilitate this use and continued uses like hunting and exploration out on the landscape, we do need to improve the parking situation. I would love to be able to show our maps, but I don't know how to do that. This being my first time here. We can do that for you.
Which map did you want to show first?
If I could show the let's.
The overall or?
Map. Can we show map three of phase one? Ah, good.
That one?
Yeah, that will be helpful. I'll have to remember not to wander away from the microphone. So this project is proposed originally in two phases. We combined it into one because that seemed to make more sense. Thank you very much to those, to Erin in particular, who recommended that we do that. So phase one involves our parking situation and access off of Oak Street. So this is opposite address four thirty-two in Oak Street. We are looking forward to having an actual address for our our property. We intend to do that for both, you know, direction finding and emergency access in time. So at present, on that map, you'll see the purple polygon is where people typically park. The yellow lines indicate our current access into the property. It's pretty rough once you get beyond that purple polygon. And so the area that we're proposing for parking, although it does have an open space with no trees, it is a former, a former logging yard. It's difficult to get to, especially with little cars like my Prius. So we have been parking with permission of the abutting landowner in that little purple polygon, and our neighbor has been very gracious in allowing us to continue doing so as we work toward this project. So the land trust proposes to widen the existing access road, which has only previously been used for forestry. Widen it to accommodate turning of buses in particular off of Oak Street. We want to be able to offer educational opportunities on this property, so accommodating a school bus and a turnaround for that was important to us in this plan. The driveway entrance permit has been received from DOT. I have a copy of that with me tonight. So the existing access is about twelve feet wide. We're proposing to increase it to at least sixteen feet. That includes widening the entranceway and the radius of that entranceway to accommodate churning. So vehicles will be able to proceed inward about two hundred fifty to three hundred feet to reach that parking area. There would be a gate or other barricade at the red mark along the, along the route. And in the event that we are anticipating school buses, we would keep half the lot clear of any other parked vehicles to make sure that they can back into the sixty by eighty space and then back, head back out onto the road safely. We're expecting that school bus use will not be unanticipated. We're working with schools to try to get them interested in visiting the property, but we expect that we will be notified anytime a bus is headed there. So we will have time to check and make sure that parking is clear. If that becomes an issue, we're certainly open to putting in signage that would indicate bus only parking. This, the dimensions of the parking area were selected because that is the dimension of the already cleared area. There would be no significant tree removal needed for the parking area, and it is already very heavily impacted ground from the previous use as a log yard. We propose a drainage swale on the side of the parking area that is closest to an existing wetland. So we will pay close attention to how water drains off of this new parking lot. It will be a gravel surface, no, you know, not intending to pave it, and it will be cloud in the winter. So the gate was discussed at the site plan review meeting. The gate is what we originally proposed. One of our board members would like to propose that we have a removable bollard instead, which makes access by, in future, wheelchairs, horses, and mountain bikes easier. The only way that we can approach that is if we can prove that we can remove that bollard easily in the wintertime. That would be the major limitation versus a gate. So one of the things we want to be very cognizant of in this entire project is emergency access when needed. The vehicles cannot get all the way through our trail system unless it's a UTV or ATV, in which case they can navigate the entire existing trail system. So talking about just beyond the gate here, you'll see two lines, one purple, one blue, crossing the trail, the proposed trail. The purple is an existing cast iron culvert. It's well situated. It's not going anywhere. And we propose to keep that and add a second culvert because we have noticed overflow in storm events, water washing right across the surface of the old logging road. So as we improve that section, we do wish to include that second drainage. We would be installing at least two signs, at least two signs that are proposed currently in our plan. One would be a sign at the road edge indicating our ownership and that public is welcome. Another would be our larger kiosk, which would be not visible from the road tucked in close to that gate at the edge of the parking area. The two little plus symbols on the the stretch of trail indicate our need for gravel fill because it's been rutted out by previous use, both with logging equipment and then subsequently with some ATV access before we own the property. Thankfully, that ATV access seems to be declined or gone, but we do still wish to have a gate of some kind to protect the trail system, especially once we improve it. Could you back up to map two for me? Yes, okay. This shows a slightly wider scene. You still see Oak Street there. You see most of our little features, including the proposed parking. I show you this screen only to point out the, it doesn't show very well. But there are two other plus symbols indicating need for more gravel. And there are also two small red triangles in two locations. Those just represent debris piles that we noted from previous landowners. And it's not a big part of this project, but we do intend to have machinery remove those. It's shingles, plastic, you know, concrete debris that's been piled up in a couple places. So we do hope to remove those. I think there are actually three locations, yes. One is right next to our neighbors in Holding, closer to the road. So that is phase one. I could talk about the larger phase two unless there are questions about the first phase of the project. Okay. If I could see the property wide map in phase two, that would be very helpful. Yes, perfect, okay. So if you'll zoom out just a little bit to be able to see the whole trail system. Can everybody hear me okay, by the way? Okay.
It won't let me shrink it anymore.
Oh, all right. Okay. I appreciate that. So what you see on this map, the red line is our property boundary. And the reason that you see two separate parcels in this property boundary is because we funded them by different mechanisms, and we, we need to keep track of that as we do our work because there are limitations on the south and western side. We refer to it as west side, and then the north and eastern side, we refer to as the east side. So work that's done on the west side has to adhere to a project agreement that we have with the Maine Natural Resources Conservation Program. That was the wetlands mitigation program that helped to fund that portion of the property, approximately three hundred ten acres. Their primary reason for helping us to conserve that land is wetlands protection and restoration. And so anything we do on that portion of the property has to adhere to very strict standards to protect wetlands and prevent anything like erosion, sedimentation, any kind of impingement or damage to wetlands. So also as part of that funding package came the obligation for us to do wetlands restoration at several impacted points along the trail. The white circles with orange markings indicate the three primary restoration sites. Those are, those are the places where water goes across the trail and the existing wetland has been damaged. And so the M and RCP program required us to create a restoration plan, which we did with Dana Truslow of Truslow Resource Consulting, to make sure that we have a plan for creating a restoration of whatever wetland has been impacted at those points where the road, the logging road crosses, and that our continuing use of that road as a trail, that it won't create more sedimentation, erosion, and so on. So those three points are covered by the restoration plan. In addition to those, the purple circles that you see with the little hammer symbol are are locations for additional trail work where water impinges on the trail. These are not actual wetlands, but they are places where water has been coursing across the trail or otherwise causing a erosion problem. We want to repair those, although they are not official restoration sites. That's a big part of our work here. So in order to facilitate that, perhaps I should step back for one moment and describe the trail system. From our entrance on Oak Street, if you went all the way around the widest loop that you can create out there, that's about three point eight miles. So it is a large trail system. It connects to the Sanford Rail Trail at the northern end in two locations. One that's close to the Carpenter's Crossing Bridge and one a little bit further toward the Hanson Ridge Road. So that trail system, we would not have put it exactly where it is now if we had the opportunity to choose. This is the existing major forestry road. The connector trail that goes through the center also follows an existing forestry track, so a skid trail, some people would call it. So we're limited to this in large part because we cannot impact new areas, especially on the west side, and we don't want to impact new areas where we don't have to. So we're sticking with the trail system and we're going to try to make it the best it can be where it is. That will involve the trail restoration and the trail improvement sites that I spoke of. In addition, we will need one bridge, which is noted with a small round symbol with a green marking on the southwestern portion, and a reroute of a trail that already exists. The major trail went up and over a very steep area, and we are rerouting it to an alternative skid trail that is a bit overgrown but can be made into a functional trail and doesn't have that erosion problem. Okay, so in order to do these projects, we need, we will need to have some fill material brought to some of these sites because there's been heavy rutting and erosion, especially near these wetland areas. In some places, we need to build it up, put a culvert or a, or a bridge at these wetland crossing locations. And so we're going to need, pardon me, we're going to need some fill material. And we decided that because we don't want to bring in too much outside material that could bring in invasive plant seeds in particular, we are proposing to source the material on site. The orange squares that you see in one, two, three, four, five locations across this map, two on the east side and three on the west side. Those are all locations that have been heavily impacted by the prior use of the property. They are either log yards where there's no existing trees over three inches in diameter, or they are heavily impacted areas of the skid trail system that also have no standing trees. We selected those sites because the mineral soil is close to the surface. We will be able to take off the top foot or so of material, set that aside, take mineral soil from underneath, then replace the material that was the top surface and reseed. So those are borrow pits that we're proposing in order to gain the material we need to do the work on site. This reduces the amount of traffic going in and out of the preserve during this construction project. Finally, the last thing on this map is the yellow X marks, which are at the perimeter near our boundary. There are two up by the rail trail. There's one that extends toward Harry Howe Extension Road, and there are two on the southwestern portion. These are places that we anticipate needing some type of a barrier, whether that's bollards, a gate, or boulders. We will be proposing to block those areas so that ATVs will not be able to illicitly access the property and cause damage to the trail system and the wetlands. Those at the rail trail will be some type of removable arrangement because we do want to continue to allow emergency access from that direction as well. We've been encouraged to get Knox locks for the various gates, and if we have a locking bollard system, that would be the case as well. We are happy to do that, and we do anticipate providing a, an overall map when we have names for our trails and consistent markings out in the field. That would be helpful for navigating in the event of an emergency. Let me just check my notes and make sure I haven't missed anything. The map is very helpful for reminding me what's going on. Signs. Ah, yes, two more notes, the actual notes that are put on this map. The more northerly one indicates a need for a large bridge. That is not part of our current application. That will be a later phase. It would be a very expensive bridge, and we do not have the resources for that right now. It does present a barrier along the trail system, especially during times of high water. You couldn't get a vehicle across it if you tried, which makes it all the more important that we maintain emergency access from the north as well as from Oak Street. So you may see us coming back in future to address that need for a bridge if we come by the funding. Secondly, the other note, the more southerly note, indicates the need for a beaver deceiver. After we bought the property, the beaver came back to that location, and they have been building up a beautiful little dam. We love the beaver. We want to keep them there, but we can't let them continue to raise the level of that particular wetland and overflow our trail system if we want to have a sustainable, passable trail through that area. So our solution in consultation with IFNW and the Maine Natural Resources Conservation Program has been to propose a beaver deceiver arrangement whereby the water flow will be protected from being dammed up and will continue to flow under our proposed bridge at that location. Happy to give you more detail about that. They're very curious and effective devices. But I think that's it. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll open the public hearing, and then if there are any questions, we'll, we'll bring it back to you, okay?
Absolutely.
Great. I'll now declare the public hearing open. If there's anybody who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody on Zoom besides Crystal? Look like it. All right, anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this project? Anyone who would like to speak neither for nor against, but would like to make any comments or ask any questions? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed and open it up to planning board comment.
What qualifies this as a major site plan?
The amount of change to the site. Now she's referring to all of these as existing trails and existing roads, and these are all old logging roads that while there was a skidder that drove through the woods, they're not actually a road. So it's, it's the, it's the square footage of actual change to the site. And while they are proposing to be as minimally impactful as possible, it still is a change where we're formally going from what was essentially a working forest to now a outdoor place of recreation use with, with actually defined trails instead of just skidder paths.
I'm just looking at, I'm just wondering why it wasn't, it sounds more like it would belong at site plan review than planning board, honestly.
It's just because of the scale. As she said, this is three and a half miles of trails. It's, it's a big project.
I wish I, wish I had been able to bring you photos of what the trail actually looks like. It was so heavily impacted by that forestry that in many places that it's ten to twelve feet wide.
I'm very familiar with the property.
Yes, oh, good, good.
So, growing up just down the road and hunting on the property after they logged it, I'm very familiar with the, the condition.
Hey, any other comments, thoughts, questions?
I have to ask a question. What's a beaver receiver, deceiver?
Yes, a beaver deceiver. So. So, uh, forgive me if I get too close to the microphone. I tend to move around. Uh, so, at that location, we're proposing a seven-foot wide bridge to accommodate, i-if need be, snowmobiles, ATV access for emergency or maintenance purposes. So, what you'll see as you get to that bridge, uh, is, uh, a wetland off to your left-hand side, and at the bridge, you would see a PVC, uh, non-PVC, a plastic pipe, a corrugated plastic drainage pipe running underneath the bridge. That pipe will go to the upstream side into this wetland to where there's a, a bit of a pool of water that's collected, impounded water. And that would be beyond where the beaver had been building their dam. So, right into their, their built-up wetland is where this pipe would run. Now, when it reaches its end, it will be encased in a, a cube of mesh, wire mesh. Uh, so, that mesh will keep the beaver from per-perceiving where they can place sticks to block it, and even if they try to put sticks around this cage, uh, they won't be able to effectively stop the flow because the water will flow under and/or over, uh, the sticks that they place. So, because they can't stop the flow, it keeps flowing through the pipe out, uh, under our bridge and into the downstream part of the wetland, and they are unable to raise the water level of the, uh, upstream wetland to the point where it would overflow our trail. Happy to explain.
Ben, can you share my screen for a second, please?
Crystal, do you have any comments while the screen's coming up?
Oh, yes, yep.
I do not. I thought the presentation was very thorough, so, for once, I don't have any questions.
Okay. I just didn't want to forget about you.
No, that's okay. I won't let you. Don't worry.
I think the only thing I bring in, it doesn't, uh, apply to any, you know, me approving it and not approving it, but with the parking lot being two or 300 feet away from the road in, in a heavily wooded area, um, because there was partying activity on this office logging road in the past, um, you just may want to be cautious of...
Right.
People utilizing the parking lot.
Absolutely. I appreciate you bringing up that point. That is a concern of ours as well. The main reason that we haven't considered putting the parking area closer to the road is that we didn't want to impact a site that already had good forest growth on it.
Yeah.
We were planning to reuse the, the logging yard. So, our anticipated action there is to, well, we do have a near neighbor that is very good about informing us about any activity on the site. We really appreciate him. Same neighbor that's allowing us to park partially onto his property. But, our, I anticipate that we will be putting up game cameras, at least, to monitor activity at the site. We already have a sign out there that says, "Area under video surveillance. Don't tell anybody is not actually video surveillance yet." But, we do have people that check on the site frequently.
Awesome.
Uh, so, yes, we are aware of the issue, and, uh, once the road is improved and we are encourage, encouraging people to go there more frequently, we, uh, expect to be, we expect to have more reports. Our solution to things like this is usually to get more people on the landscape, so, and to encourage anyone to report any issues to us.
Yep.
Anything else from the board? All right, do we have findings, facts on this one?
We do.
Okay.
280-16-7.1 utilization of site has been met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
All right, we do roll call vote. Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so six, zero.
280-16-7.6 stormwater management has been met because adequate provisions have been made for stormwater management.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Right, roll call. Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, six, zero.
280-16-7.7 erosion control has been met because adequate provisions will be made for erosion control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, six, zero.
280-16-7.11 natural features have been met because the project is designed to minimize impacts on natural features of the site.
Motion to approve.
Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, six, zero.
280-16-7.14 solid waste disposal has been met because the trail system is proposed to be a carry-in, carry-out method of disposal.
Motion to approve.
Should've been asked this all along. Any comments? All right, Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
280-16-7.15 landscaping has been met because the site is naturally landscaped and the project maintains slash improves natural vegetation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Jack?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I did not need to go out of order.
I know.
Didn't miss a beat, though.
280-16-7.16 shoreline relationship has been met because the proposed development is designed to improve site impact in the shoreline zone.
Motion to approve.
Any questions? Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, six, zero.
280-16-7.17 technical and financial capacity has been met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, six, zero.
280-16-7.2 access to the site, 280-16-7.3 access into the site, 280-16-7.4 internal vehicular circulation, and 280-16-7.5 pedestrian circulation has been met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, six, zero.
280-16-7.8 water supply, 280-16-7.9 sewers disposal, 280-16-7.10 utilities, 280-16-7.12 groundwater protection, 280-16-7.13 exterior lighten, 280-16-7.18 buffering, 280-16-7.19 airport encroachment is all not applicable because the applicant is not proposing any development.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, six, zero. That it? All right, ready for suggested motion.
The Planning Board accepts the information in the July 18, 2023, Summer Report, and the July 19, 2023, Site Plan Review Committee Recommendation grants the requested waivers and finds that the proposed major site plan application file R423 to improve existing access driveway, improve create sustainable, sustainable recreational trails, and to create a 60-by-80-foot gravel parking area on property owned by the Three Rivers Land Trust and located off of Oak Street has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the zoning ordinance subject to the submission of information and conditions described below. By August 19, 2023, unless other arrangements are made with the Planning Director, provide five copies of revised plans to the Planning Department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, provide construction details for the gravel access road and parking area. B, provide construction details for proposed erosion control, soil, and/or landscaping. C, add no parking in front of gate. Sign and show NOX box location, NOX lock location on plan for gated trailheads. D, provide details on signage with final dimensions depicted on the site plan. And E, standard conditions of approval number two, performance guarantee, number five, state agency permits, number six, inspection fee escrow, number seven, pre-construction meeting, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Hold on.
Holding.
I'm gonna add one more, that the, um, final trail markings be color-coded and a map provided for emergency access. That was talked about in the site plan.
Yeah, we do intend to do that. We are pretty far from, uh, having our trail markings up, uh, but we will be naming the trails and marking them, and we would be happy to provide a map when that's finished.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Jack?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, six, zero. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, good luck. Thank you.
All right, so, we're all done with hearings and business, uh, so, we have a discussion topic that we want to, uh, bring up on conservation subdivision?
We had an applicant approach us, uh, during an informal pre-app, uh, and he was, um, inquiring about potentially doing higher density development in our rural zones, uh, more specifically in his case, the RMU zone, but, um, he was, he was broader discussion to both our rural zones. Our planner has, um, has worked in other communities where they had, um, some guidance in this, so she prepared a, a, a help document for tonight to start the discussion, to see if you guys would entertain the thoughts of further discussion or whether it's a, a plus or a minus at this point.
Thank you, Jamie. Um, so, yes, I think this would be a topic that would normally and naturally come up during a comprehensive planning process, but because we've had this applicant come to us, we just thought we would bring it to you ahead of time, um, and see, kind of just take your temperature on it. So, I don't foresee us coming to a conclusion tonight on this, but, um, I did kind of load in some information into Google Drive today that potentially you've not had a chance to look over and would recommend looking over before we make any kind of final decision. But, the, the help document that Jamie's referring to, I guess we could pull it up. Did you just close that up?
I did leave it open.
Okay. Um, so, I'm, uh, calling this a conservation subdivision and, uh, would like to make a note that we already in our ordinance have the provision for a cluster development or cluster subdivision, which is sort of layered on top of existing zoning regulations and does provide for a slightly more dense pattern of development than would be typically allowed in the rural residential and rural mixed-use zones. However, it's not necessarily as dense as it could be, um, and, and we're, uh, taking into account some, ma-many factors, basically, that, um, demographics are changing across the state of Maine, and in Sanford, we have, um, a lot of pressure in the housing market moving in from the coast and up from other eastern cities. Uh, we also have an increase in, um, immigrants and New Mainers that are looking for maybe a different style of housing. And on top of that, there are several, uh, associations or groups that are looking to advocate for the preservation of natural resources in Maine. So, this is a potential option that, um, basically, if you look at the numbers, Ben, if you could pull up Jamie's screen, um, where we're comparing, the important numbers to look at here is the net density, so the maximum dwelling units per net acreage, and the minimum amount of open space that is protected and preserved in perpetuity. Um, for a cluster subdivision, that would be 40%. I'm proposing some numbers here that would be open for discussion. For a conservation subdivision, I would propose we flip that and make that a 60% minimum open space, but allow a higher density dwelling unit per net acre on the remaining 40% of the land. Um, I have some other options in here for potential restrictions, so potentially, we would require a site like this to be serviced by either water or sewer, either already or, you know, this could happen down the line. So, in the future, if water service, let's say, were to expand their water lines, then all of a sudden, it opens up an area that would normally have not been allowed in the rural residential zone to support this amount of density. But, if something happens in 10 years where we're already laying new pipe, then potentially we would want to account for a higher level of density. Um, I'm saying density a lot for a rural zone, but the real point of this whole subdivision is to provide a publicly accessible open space, whether that be historic farmland, trails, parks, recreations, um, could be education gardens, wetlands, anything like that. There's this other term that is kind of available in the planning sphere called an agri-hood, which is basically a subdivision where the open space is a farmland, and many of the residents take part in a community-supported agriculture. They get vegetables to their door. It's, it's sort of, um, sort of like a commune, but, uh, it's an HOA document-regulated kind of community. Um, I've seen it, I've seen it in person in many other communities. I've seen it online and, and many more. Just something to bring up. So, for an example, I pulled a 12-acre site out of a very, pretty highly-dense area in Stapleton, Colorado, um, just as an example and talking point. So, Stapleton, if you're not familiar, is a new development outside of Denver, Colorado, taking place on the previous site of the Denver Airport. Basically, Denver Airport got too small for the amount of traffic, so they relocated it, and it left this huge expanse close to the downtown, and it's the largest master planning community in the United States. So, it's a pretty good example for a lot of development that's happened in just the last 15 years, and they've been pretty creative in different development styles. That said, it's not technically a conservation subdivision, but it does have a lot of different options for high-density housing that's very recently developed and in high demand. Um, so, I just kind of overlaid a grid onto that map that shows, um, how you could fit potentially 16 homes that are sized at 1,600 to 2,600 square feet each. Um, this would only take, uh, about two acres. Maybe you could argue it's closer to three, but it's certainly not the 40% of 12 acres, which would be 4.8 acres, um, which then potentially leaves 10 acres on this 12-acre site for farmland, recreation trails, and whatnot. Um, so, this is definitely a more dense pattern of development and a dwelling unit per net acre than we currently allow either in the standard districts for rural residential and, and rural mixed-use, and also more dense than the cluster development allows, but it provides for, um, a more sustainable and economical, economically feasible way to develop and provide for preserving farmland. Uh, the last point I'll make is that there was a section in the 2005 Comprehensive Plan that spoke to the option of adding, um, a new zone that would be of moderate-density residential. They, um, or the Comprehensive Plan speaks to two to four units per acre density is what they consider moderate density. So, there is some backing in our Comprehensive Plan to allow for this sort of density. Thoughts?
I have one question.
Okay. Okay.
The state law used to require lots be twenty thousand square feet if they're serviced by private sewage. Does that still?
Correct, that is still the current state law. So that was one of my questions, to ask you all how you feel about community septic.
I've seen one development with it in Elliott. It's too new for me to really have a.
Okay, so, so we've had some discussions on the staff side of this, and I think that while there's some obvious caveats that you would maybe, or personally would not want to partake in a community septic system, I think it could potentially be managed through an HOA document, which we could come up with what the regulations need to be, like it needs to be checked quarterly, instead of what is a typical septic system being checked at an individual?
Two to three years.
Right, so instead of going three years and not knowing what your neighbors are putting into the community septic, you get it checked twice a year, four times a year.
I know my friend was concerned with the fact of that, what happens if his neighbors don't have the funds to pay for the repairs or replacement of the septic system? Who gets stuck with a bill, weapons, if no one can afford to do it? There was a lot of, he was hesitant about.
Sure. So in like a typical condominium HOA document, you would have fees every month that are generally, they're generated based on your square footage, or something else that is laid out in the bylaws, right? So we could stipulate what we would want to see in those bylaws, and then they could add on to that. But typically, an HOA that is properly managed by a professional management company has a growing account, that they, every month, add in money into their account. So if it was, you know, a six-story apartment or condo building, they're gonna be saving up for a new elevator. If it's a conservation subdivision, they'll be saving up for a new septic system.
So, I'm not in favor in rural residential for lowering the net density, meaning if you have a hundred-acre lot, and the net density was, is one acre, I'm sorry, one dwelling unit per two acres.
Per two acres, yep.
I'm not in favor of lowering that. I'm okay with decreasing the lot sizes and increasing the open space, if it's advantageous for the developer to limit the size of the developed area. I'm more okay with in rural mixed-use, because rural mixed-use tends to be closer to the urban center. I'm not really okay with adding a provision later on, because if, if a area got water and sewer service, it probably shouldn't be even zoned rural residential, or at least the applicant should be able to come and request a zoning change at that time.
I think potentially the option in that case would be a contract zone, or it would turn into a situation where there's some spot zoning, which we would like to avoid in general. So, I guess that was part of what we were hoping to kind of lay out what would be acceptable in this sort of subdivision, and have it in the code similar to the cluster subdivision code language.
Because if we allow more lots in rural area, all we're gonna do is get a ton of development in the rural area, which is kind of exactly opposite of what our comprehensive plan states. There's gonna be small lots.
To avoid sprawl and that, I mean, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
They're gonna be small, affordable lots, kind of like, I mean, not fancy trailer park. And that's, I think, gonna be a huge boom. And, you know, we could end up with drastically increasing the development in the rural residential area, which goes totally against the purpose of the rural residential area. At the same time, it can be a tool to lower the impact of development. I know with cul-de-sacs, with every single lot being one to two acres, every single lot cleared as a lawn and so forth, that's also detrimental to the environment, but I do think if we increase the allowable densities, we're just gonna get a lot more development.
Even if we're increasing the amount of open space that is required?
You increase the density, you decrease the cost of roads and so forth, so you make development opportunities a lot more advantageous.
Correct.
So you're kind of.
Promoting.
Promoting it.
I think it's promoting both at the same time, I guess would be my argument. So we're allowing density, or we're allowing development, but we're also preserving more space than would be accomplished in a typical subdivision.
People are gonna gravitate towards the best developable space, the farmland, the, and so what they're gonna try to do is conserve the wetlands, or any, anything that's undevelopable, hills, slopes, and then they're gonna go straight for the high-value land.
Yep, we have some provisions in our cluster subdivision where I think it's only twenty percent of the required open space is allowed to be either wetlands or a slope over fifteen percent. So we could have a similar or exactly the same provision, so, which would basically safeguard all of the protected open space from being basically unusable or undevelopable space. There should actually be some publicly accessible land.
Because this makes my field so much easier, more easily developed, so I'm just, I'm throwing it out there that I don't think this is, this may actually backfire.
I want to just add something into the mix, slightly different topic, but similar. We've talked a little bit about LD 2003 over the last year or so. The state has finally finalized the law, and I say finalized loosely, because I don't think it's final yet, but they have extended the deadline for communities with city council form of government to December thirty-first of this year. So we have until December thirty-first to modify our zoning ordinances to comply with LD 2003. They have given us some guidance documents that me and Aaron and the city manager did sit down this week and discuss. Was it this week or last week?
It was last week.
Last week. And whether any of us like it or not, there is changes coming to our rural zones. I'm not gonna say it's gonna require as dense a development as was just potentially proposed, but we are gonna be handcuffed into allowing, I'm gonna say, a decent amount of development in our rural zones under LD 2003. Just to put that in the back of your mind, I didn't want to, I don't want to mix the topics, because they're two different topics, but in theory, once we pass LD 2003, required state-mandated amendments, and by that, they have taken away home-will authority, and are telling us we have to do this, we don't have an option. We can go more, less restrictive, but we can't go more restrictive. Once you guys start to decipher what that means, this might not look as bad as it does to you today.
Doesn't it have to be affordable housing?
It does not.
There's a different program, part of 2003, that allows even more density if it's affordable housing.
The statute basically states if you have a.
How many developers are looking at affordable housing? It seems like everything's market rate that's going on in Sanford right now.
Until there's incentivized to build affordable housing, until that, again, handcuffs communities into allowing denser requirements, gives them availability to get more funding sources.
What's the incentive, though? Is the state come up with any monies to incentivize this?
Or pay for help with the services increases?
They have come up with some funding to offset the cost of updating ordinances.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the developer.
So there is gonna be special programs for, I don't know the special programs, I'm gonna just ad lib here and say, say Maine Housing Authority has lots of various programs where people get funded. For instance, our Sanford Housing Authority is in a timeline to get in line for some Maine Housing Authority money. Stanton Mill is applying for lots of money, so there are given specific pots of money to affordable housing projects that will be built in the future under LD 2003. You guys are gonna be seeing a project maybe at the next planning board meeting, maybe, no, not the next one, two meetings from now.
Very end, where you almost ran out of all the parts.
Godwell?
Oh, great, great.
That they are weighing the best options for two different potential funding sources, one of which would potentially be the new funding source that is getting approved. So, so there.
Oh, is that the condos?
I'm sorry?
Yep.
The condos at the site plan?
Yeah. So, again, I'm not advocating for or against any of these ideas right now. I'm just forewarning you, because when, when I took the time to read through these guidance documents that was passed out from the state for parts of Maine that are very rural, and I consider Sanford has parts that are rural still, there's, there's gonna be a little bit of shell-shock in the planning boards. Not everything that we're gonna propose to you, you're gonna like to see.
It's rural till it's not. That's the problem, it's.
It's not gone yet.
It's only gonna be rural for so long, and then. It sounds like Massachusetts, Southern New Hampshire, everything that I don't want to live near.
But, but again, it's not that bad. I don't want to scare you into nightmares tonight. But, but there is some, some tough conversations that we're gonna have in the next, I mean, it's almost, it's almost.
It's almost time.
At this point, so we got four months to do these ordinances.
Yep.
So one of the, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so part of the LD 2003 is that if you have a comprehensive plan with a designated growth area, anything within that growth area has to allow up to four units on an existing vacant lot. So we do have portions in both our rural residential and rural mixed-use that are within that technical growth boundary area, that could now have a quadplex or four separate single-family homes on one parcel.
With no regard to, well, does it have to be twenty thousand square feet for the sewage system still?
Yeah, there's still other requirements and lot size minimums that we need to like work through, but my goal in bringing up this topic today is for you all to start thinking of, yes, we love the rural aspects of the rural areas of Sanford, but what part of that is it that you actually want to preserve? Like what is the goal in designating an area of town that, we are now actually a city, we're a designated city? What is the goal in identifying areas that should remain rural? And is it to allow large lot, single-family homes to continue, or is it to preserve farmland? Or is it to preserve an area for your residents to go and recreate? Those are all topics that are part of the larger conversation that also apply to both of these.
You know, higher-density housing is gonna bring problems of its own. It's gonna exacerbate the traffic problems and the city services problem.
So providing services in the rural areas is expensive. Me and Aaron had this conversation, that that is part of the problem, and the city manager is conscious of that. Again, in some cases, our hands are kind of gonna be tied of what we have to allow, and as, as Aaron said, in the growth zone, four units per lot. There's a decent amount of RR zone and a semi-decent amount of RMU zone in our growth zone. And on top of the four units, you might even better throw in an accessory unit in there too. That doesn't count, but does. So there is potential decent density development that we can't say no to.
Where are the growth areas in the RR zone? Down by, close to the city?
Lake McDougals?
Essentially southeast of downtown.
Oh. So down towards Wells?
You can pass down your book, maybe?
So our, our growth zone that we have in our comprehensive plan is not a technical GIS shapefile that we have, that we can very clearly cut which parcels are in and which parcels are out, but I was able to overlay them, and that red boundary shows what would be within the growth zone.
The comprehensive plan was enacted pre-GIS, if anybody can imagine that. It was enacted during the flip phone days.
Yes. So as part of the larger, the larger conversation with LD 2003 that we've been having with the city manager and staff here is like, we will be tied to certain restrictions, but is there a way to incentivize the kind of housing that we actually want in certain areas? So that's another way to think about it. If you, the things that you want to happen, we could incentivize small areas of higher density, and then also preserve more land. That's just another way to think of it, especially considering the areas that are within the growth zone and are likely to be served by either water or sewer, or both.
I'll be completely honest in a statement. When Aaron first approached me on this, I looked at her like she just landed from Mars, and I'm like, good luck. But then I started more in-depth reading in LD 2003. And it doesn't say we can't create an ordinance, it says you can have the density, but you gotta do it this way. So in my opinion, if we're gonna be forced to have dense in the rural zones, I want it on a posted stamp with a fifty-acre farm around it. And if we can do that, that, in my case, is if we lose our home-will authority where we can't say, you can't have more than one dwelling per every two acres. I'd love to say it every ten, but our ordinance says every two. If we have to do it, then let's find a way to preserve the farmland, because.
Can you require sewer and water?
No, not with LD 2003. With, with our potential new conservation subdivision, we could, but not with 2003. I drive Hansford Ridge Road almost daily, and I see these for-sale signs that I cry every time I drive by, because one of these days I'm gonna get a phone call in either the planning or the coach's office, and they're gonna say, I want to build a fifteen-lot subdivision on the corner of Oak Street and Hansford Ridge Road. And I do that.
The science came down for that, so I don't know what's going on.
Good.
I don't know if he was asking.
And I'm gonna have to answer why, yes, you can.
No, you can't. Say no.
So I would love it if, if we have to, and again, I'm staying open-minded, but if we have to do this, I would love to put some protections that requires more open space, requires it to be some sort of rural use, to try to maintain and salvage much of the rural character as we can, if we're gonna have to go down this route.
What was, sorry, quick question. What was the consensus between the city manager and other staff members?
We did not discuss this form of subdivision. We were more discussing the updates that need to happen because of LD 2003, so I wouldn't say there was a consensus.
Got it, okay.
I think they would probably value your, this group's opinion, and it's not a tonight decision.
Yeah, this is just a very preliminary discussion.
What was the conservation ratio you mentioned at the beginning?
So, for instance, right now, in the RR and RMU zone, your maximum net density is one dwelling unit per two net acre. That stays for cluster development, one dwelling unit per two net acre, but there's a requirement of forty percent minimum open space, and I'm proposing two dwelling units per one net acre with a required sixty percent open space.
What will the effect on the act have on either of those two options? Because obviously, the cluster development's probably not as dense as it's gonna be in the future, no?
Well, the, the cluster development already has the provision for a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, so I believe that is a stipulation that is allowable to continue.
Correct. The best I can tell, we can salvage some of those standards. I have not had the time to thoroughly absorb what we can and can't do yet. I do believe we're gonna maintain a little bit of home-will authority with having some dimensional requirements, but I'm not sure, I'm almost positive we're not gonna be able to maintain all of our dimensional requirements, but I do feel we'll be able to salvage some of them.
I would argue that while we have this cluster development on the books, and it's better than a traditional, typical subdivision, it's still not really preserving usable space in a meaningful way.
That's the other question I have, is the preserving the space. With the current open spaces, this question on who owns it, who maintains it, who gets to use it, all these other things that aren't really described anyways, you know, a lot of people just clear, extend their yards into it. And so like with this, we say, here's preserving farmland, who owns and gets to use the farmland? I know there's the option for the HOA and all the residents, but is it.
I would love to see it a requirement that it's given to a nonprofit, say like the Three Rivers Land Trust that was just here.
Have a conservation.
She's still here. She'll take it. She'll take it.
Like a conservation easement.
She's talked a lot about making it public use, in my opinion. The best way to do that is the municipality can't, can't absorb all the land.
No.
But I would love to see it go into like a land trust type situation where that is preserved in perpetually, I mean, forever.
Yeah. But I mean, even if it's in private ownership, as a working farm with a conservation easement on it, I'd be just as happy with that, too.
Yep.
So again, if we're going this route, I think we've got to start thinking about those types of, if, if we're going to be forced to do it, let's start thinking about some of these things we can do to, to try to make us be able to sleep as good as we can at night, knowing that our rural zone was just stripped from us.
I love your, I love your idea. It's just, you know, the... Love your idea, it's just a way to like, you know, like you said, come with an ordinance now before, because we're going to be forced to do it. But at the same time, too, you want to expand, you want to have more housing here, people and stuff like that. So I mean, and I'm pretty sure it will be more modernized, too. So it's a win-win situation here, so I mean, I love the idea, but just to add in certain zones or, you know, trying to shape it how we want it now.
Can you say, is there some way the city can provide some incentive not to develop the land? I mean, it's really up to the property owner whether they want to subdivide it or sell it or just build houses all over the place on it. I mean, is there some incentive that the city could provide to not do that?
So, so we have TIF districts, which are primarily in our urban cores, which does incentivize development within a TIF district. It gives you tax incentives. We don't have any TIF districts out in the Willy Wonkers, and I wouldn't want to incentivize it out there type of thing. So while the city can't, well, I guess I don't know if the city could, but I, I don't think the city could actually pay a developer to build on this lot instead of this lot type of thing. We could, we could make it less restrictive to build in the urban zone. We could, we can't make it less restrictive, there are, there are no requirements.
No restrictions, right.
Normally you could make it less restrictive.
But to Lenny's point is, right now they can develop a two-acre lot, build as many houses as they want if they have the land, support two acres with the, with the conservation part of it. If we want to preserve the land, that's what, that's the point he's making is, could we, you know, I'd rather than not do any of it, right? But if they're going to do it, would I rather have one house every two acres and just spread out across Jase's field? Or would I rather see a cluster with a whole bunch of conserved land around it? So, I mean, I see, I definitely appreciate what you're, what you're saying there. I also know the difficulty with...
They're building houses to make money.
Yeah.
They're not doing it to be nice to create housing, they're building houses to make money.
Or conservation land.
Well, I guess that's the incentive that we're offering. We're offering a higher level of density, which gives them more money in...
The roads cost less.
...the sale of homes, but we're...
On a scale.
Right, but we're preserving more land for the community.
Yeah, because I'd be even, I'd be even more inclined to give an incentive to not build on the prime area, so the things that we want to preserve, you know, to stay away from, because like what, it always amazes me, one of the fascinations with people is to build right in the view or build the, like, you have this giant field, you put the house right in the middle. Like, in my mind, you'd want to put it on the edge so you can look at the whole field and, you know.
Yeah, I think that is the examples that I've seen more frequently for this kind of development where they are, especially if it's going to be farmland, you have to preserve the area that's farmable.
Yeah.
And semi-recently, we, we battled through the allowing utility-scale solar in the RR zone. And in those provisions, we put, you can't do it on prime farmland and, excuse my ignorance, Jack, I, I don't know the types of soil and stuff, but there was a lot of discussions on not allowing them to use the best land to put solar panels on. We could, we could do similar stuff in, in this to say, if you're in the middle of Jack's orchard, you, you can't cut down the apple trees to plant 100 houses type of thing.
Now, didn't we change the, as long as they can return it back to that? Like, if they scrape the material off, they could put the, the solar panels, for example? I thought we made a concession there.
There is, there is a provision that says all of the, all of the top soil has to be left on-site to, to revert everything back to the way it was. But I, I think we could get creative.
What was stated was if the solar panels are only good for 25 or 30 years, they can pull those out and you go back to farming. But, you know, if you get a solar site and things get cheaper, they're going to continue using it.
Yeah. Well, and a house is permanently taking over that site.
Because I mean, we're going to reach a point, the farmland's not going to matter in Sanford because...
What?
In fighting words.
No, no, but the unprotected farmland isn't going to matter, because there's not going to be enough of it that's, you know, not broken up to protect.
We are in a farming renaissance, and I'm proud to say that. Five years ago, I would have said farming is on its way out in southern Maine, not Sanford, but southern Maine. There is, farms are coming back, and it's awesome to drive down and see farm stands on the sides of the streets and... Where I am scared, if more density is allowed in our rural zones, that will potentially change that because the field that I just talked about...
Yep.
...is expensive because it's good land, and thus far it hasn't sold because it's expensive. But that also means a farmer can't afford to buy it.
Cornfield drive, used to be a cornfield.
I, that's why I say I have tears as I drive by it every day, Jack.
Yeah, I like the idea of the conservation easement or something like Three Rivers, because Maine Farmland Trust holds the easement on the orchard, and they come up every year and walk part of the property to make sure we haven't put a golf course in or a camp area or something.
And because even that could be an incentive for the farmer to, you know, be able to split off land to make, you know, to keep money to keep the farm running, they're able to preserve what's actually important to them, maybe split off, you know, a small cluster development, get a conservation easement on the actual farm itself and continue operating.
Correct.
Because at some point, at some point, the, the land's going to become so valuable, like the corner of Oak Street and Hanson Ridge, it's too expensive to possibly farm, unless money's now an object.
The word affordable for anything is no longer a word. We can, we can strike that from our dictionary at this point.
All right. Any other thoughts on this? Obviously, we're not going to...
Thank you for the great conversation.
Yep, that was helpful, thank you.
Thank you for putting all this together.
You're welcome.
It's definitely an intriguing discussion.
Yeah, I included some news articles and some other things in the Google Drive, so you don't have to do your own search, but feel free to start Googling. It's pretty interesting, I think.
Appreciate it.
Right, planning director's report. Anything else to talk about?
We're still getting applications in, not as fast and furious as they were six months ago, but we're still getting decent, decent stuff in. The codes office is, is completely buried. Everything that we've approved does now hit the other side of my desk. So the, the world of Sanford is still going strong, very, very strong. LD 2003 is going to be coming your way. We're going to start having to have discussions about these because four months sounds like a long time away, but it'll be here before you know it. So that will become part of a regular discussion. Once Aaron has time to actually put some stuff into it, we'll probably schedule a work session to actually have a decent discussion on it.
That has to go to council for two readings, too?
It has to go to you guys first and the council, yep.
So my recommendation would be, let's not tack it on to the end of a long meeting like this one as a work session, because we've seen that happen, we just keep rolling it, focus it on...
It's going to have to take priority. At some time in the near future, we're going to have to make it a priority, because again, four months is not that long.
Is a priority now, right?
I'm not, I'm not super worried if we go a meeting over into next year before it's enacted, but we can't go six months into next year before it's enacted. And the gravel pit is supposed to be coming back to us here any day now. I, I have not seen it yet, but we're also going to be adding on gravel pit discussions again to try to get that wrapped up by the end of the year. And on top of it, we have authorized Aaron to start our comprehensive plan update, so...
I've got a lot of time on my hands, it's fine.
So we are, when I say we're busy, we, we mean it. And I am going to try my hardest. The city manager has committed resources as well. We don't want the comprehensive plan to keep being put on the back burner as it has for the last 10 years. We always have an excuse, we're busy, and we're always will be busy. Hopefully Sanford is, is continuing to grow and, and that's our goal, so we're, we're going to have to force time, whether that means we, we, we hire more help or what we have to do. I have been promised resources if I need them, and I have now requested them, so we're going to, we're going to, unfortunately, it took us five years to find Aaron, so I'm not saying I'm going to find help tomorrow. But we are going to actively start bolstering the team, at least attempting to, and, and to, to keep both sides of my hallway running efficiently. Because both sides of the hallway at this point are at max capacity. Matt's position is another one, we're actively trying to hire a second Matt because his position is also beyond its limit of capacity.
He can't be replaced.
So Sanford is growing, Sanford is doing good, and I, I don't see that slowing down anytime soon.
All right, thank you. Communications, anybody have anything else?
Starbucks is coming to the...
What's that?
Starbucks is coming to the shopping center.
Oh yeah, that got approved, that site plan yesterday. Starbucks is replacing the old Bank of America property at the Center for Shopping.
Oh my, that's awesome. Yay!
We got one coffee mecca.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, call it coffee drinkers.
So I guess the only communication I have is, sorry, this is the longest meeting we've had since January. But it was a good, good meeting, good discussion, I appreciate everybody's, everybody's time and kind of passion on this, on this stuff, so, all right. Have a good, have a good week.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call. Jack? Lenny?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
And Crystal?
Absolutely.
All right, and I am at six.